So any of you may nominate. By charter, you need a vice chair and a vice chair. And typically, you have had a secretary as well.
Is the nominations for chair open?
They're open.
Yeah.
Well, okay, I would like to nominate Carol Snow. I do not need to go into the excellence of her performance and stern leadership and the fact that she has issued some vanity at all times. So I will be quiet and just let that go.
You can't see my thought cloud.
Well, yeah, the nomination.
Thank you. So do we go ahead and vote on that, Erin, or do we go for all?
Sure, you have a second on the floor. You can have discussion.
Thank you. New discussion.
Should we vote? For Carol Snow, for Chair of the.
Yeah, so you.
That's been your reasonable experience, you know.
It's like six grand. Thanks for the lollipops.
All right, Vice Chair.
It's vacant.
So that was a vote.
All in favor?
Oh, all in favor, did you hear that?
Any votes? I think she can.
Oh, John's in favor too.
There you go.
I would like to nominate for Vice Chair. Bob Renner. We have not discussed this.
I would second that. The guy's an engineer.
That's a good thing or a bad thing?
Well. Goes both ways, depending upon the context.
Any other nominations or discussion? Do you accept the nomination?
What do you want?
All in favor?
All in favor? John, thank you, okay.
Vote.
Renner, Vice Chair, thank you.
There are listed things I have to do.
It's long.
Anything Carol doesn't want to do?
Thank you.
And a nomination for Secretary, I'm happy to make it.
I'll nominate John Dusa.
I would second that.
John Dusa, you're willing?
I will accept, thank you very much.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, with that out of the way, we thought we would switch the agenda so that the people who are here to present pending applications can go first. Could I have a motion to do that? And then we'll discuss the PCD afterwards.
I'll file a motion.
We'll do it in a second. Thank you. Any further discussion about the order of the agenda? Not all in favor? Okay, great, so. First application is 23-55, 155 New Road, MAP 60 lots 9, 10, and 11. This is a PDD, the owner is 155 New Road Madison LLC. Applicant Hammond Asset Commons LLC. It's a site plan application to construct 46 residential units and accessory common building and associated site improvements under Section 32 and Development District. You can come forward, please.
So the Attorney Marjorie Shansky.
Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Happy healthy New Year to everybody. I'm here this evening with Ryan McAvoy from SLR and with Rondi Gennaro, Principal. I think that Ryan can describe to you his subsequent work with Connecticut Water to satisfy the comments that they made with respect to the location of the property in relation to the aquifer protection zone. And so, Ryan.
Thank you, Marjorie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Very good. And I apologize for the lighting in my dining room, it makes me look angry. I can assure you I'm not. So, the last meeting, and the 21st, we submitted a letter to the Commission explaining how we were going to address the comments made by Connecticut Water Company. I had a verbal conversation with a representative of Connecticut Water prior to the meeting, and she seemed agreeable to our approach. And since then, we've submitted to Connecticut Water and to this Commission revised plans reflecting what we discussed verbally at the last meeting. There was a couple of plan changes, and if I can share my screen, I can just kind of walk you through them very quickly. So let me know if you can see my screen.
Yes, yes.
Very good, so. So one of the comments raised by Connecticut Water was to try to provide dry wells for roof runoff infiltration wherever feasible. And there are a series of units, roughly two-thirds of the units, where we have added dry well shown here as these circles in orange. We didn't provide them at every single building because stormwater infiltration does have limitations in terms of proximity to septic systems. So there are certain cases where we were not able to provide them, but for several of the units, particularly on the western side, on the upgrading part of the property, we're able to incorporate them into the plans, and the water company seemed agreeable to that. There was also the incorporation of a hydrodynamic separator, which is essentially an oil grid chamber prior to our sort of underground stormwater detention system that's below visitor parking spaces. And there's a few other items requested in terms of post-construction and maintenance plan, which we've included on our site utility plan. Not this particular rendering, but the actual plans that were submitted to the town. And that's really a summary of the plan changes, and there was an open-ended question with Connecticut Water regarding using road salt. If you recall, at the last meeting, we discussed that there's concern about elevated levels of sodium in nearby aquifer wells. And, you know, we suggested at the last meeting that we, you know, use whatever Connecticut Water recommends, and they were able to provide us feedback that that their recommendation is essentially to use road salt, but just in a reasonable and appropriate manner in accordance with suggested guidance at the state level. So there's a best management practice pamphlet manual with regards to application of road salt, which we'd be happy to incorporate if approved by this Commission. So I think in summary, we've satisfied, to the extent we can, the concerns raised by Connecticut Water. And other than that, the unit layout, site grading, septic systems, stormwater detention, stormwater quality remains essentially identical to what we discussed at the last meeting, other than, of course, the few items I just mentioned based on Connecticut Water comments. So unless there's any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
I assume the HOA responsible for maintaining the water separator?
It's going to be, yes, yes, either the owner of the apartments or homeowner's association.
I didn't hear the end of your question.
Who is responsible?
The homeowners association, but I didn't hear what you were asking.
The hydrodynamic separator who maintains the stormwater.
Yes.
All right, and the last question I had was how many additional water collection sections, pieces of equipment have been added? How many additional ones?
In terms of dry wells, I believe we have about eight or nine.
How many did you add?
Eight or nine.
Oh, you added eight.
Yes, so, yeah.
Okay.
And I think the important element is that the communication between Ryan and the acceptance of Connecticut Water for the alterations that were made in response to their observations. So. And in every other respect, at our last meeting, Ryan took us through the site plan, and I've seen the draft resolution from the town planner, and it captures the recitation of the achievement of the site plan standard. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Came up with some of the other research I've been doing. On the site operation plan for these developments, there's a list of items that need to occur re-chair maintenance of the.
For the stormwater system?
Stormwater system, this runoff questions about just how things are maintained. It always seems to be, and it came up even with like general addresses. It's built into the HOA or responsibility of the homeowners. First, I'd like, I don't recall seeing that, this one, I don't know if you have it handy.
Ryan, did you?
But more importantly, what is the, I understand it becomes responsibility of the HOA, if they don't do that, what is the enforcement?
If it's a condition of your approval, and oftentimes you have required the submission of a stormwater maintenance plan, and it is the obligation of the property owner, whether it's an association or an individual entity with rentals, to maintain that. If there's instance where that's not, then you may invite them back to visit you as an enforcement.
Is there a pathway to ensuring that the maintenance is occurring? With respect to, does the town have the authority?
Enforcing it.
To enforce it, say showing that you're maintaining it? Because some of these.
You mean as reports?
Are risk management. And if you don't do it, then the risk you're trying to manage is manifested.
Sure, and as, you know, as part of our MS for permitting, that is the town's obligation to be overseeing all this. You know, and which is why we would, I mean, and that is a claim that I think you see in a lot of towns, is you get a stormwater system, whether it's a detention basin or, you know, and a maintenance plan, and then there's never any follow-up on that. It's an age-old problem.
This is an oft-told tale, but the efficacy of the system depends on its inspection, maintenance, and repair. And I frankly can't recall, Ryan, if your plan also includes an annual reporting to the town, which would be corollary to having that requirement and then demonstrating that it had been.
It's the demonstration that the maintenance is occurring is what I'm chasing in five, 10 years of.
Right.
You don't want to do it.
And for clarity, I want to go back. Homeowners Association, in the event that these are sold units, but they may simply be managed units, in which case the property owner will maintain control and responsibility. So, and that can go either way, that is not a zoning issue per se, but I want for clarity of the record to say, one or the other will be responsible. So if you want to add, I don't know if it's there, Ryan, but if you want to add.
That was my question to Ryan, was did you develop a storm management operational plan?
Yes, I'm going to share my screen again, if that's okay. Okay, so on our revised utility plan, on the right-hand side, we have this sort of, I'd say, pretty detailed schedule.
We don't have it yet.
Yeah, we're seeing your Zoom screen.
My apologies, hold on. All right, how about now?
Great, thanks.
You have to make the print way bigger.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to read it on this screen, but regardless, we have this series of recommended maintenance intervals, inspections of critical elements of the stormwater management system. A lot of this is probably pretty standard, but, you know, catch base and inspection, cleaning, you know, parking area sweeping, maintenance of the hydrodynamic separator, inspection of dry wells, underground stormwater infiltration inspections, stormwater infiltration basins, which are surface basins on the east side primarily of the site. So there's recommendations for inspections and cleaning intervals for all these elements of the stormwater management system. We did not have a recommendation that the town be made aware of these annual inspections or inspection intervals, but that could certainly be something that can be provided, and what should be done, frankly, as a designer of these systems, we often give recommendations for how these are to be maintained, and sometimes it's done correctly, sometimes it's not, frankly. So I think reporting to the town would help enforce that.
That's quite possible for a condition such as the applicant shall implement the stormwater maintenance program as proposed by the design engineer and provide annual reports to the zoning enforcement officer.
If I may, reports in accordance with the plan, in case there are certain things that aren't necessarily annual, just saying.
That's right, so Mar.
So some good to the engineers?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. Any further questions or discussion? Could we motion to approve?
I'll file a motion.
Would you like to read the?
Sorry?
Or you do as designed?
We need this and then add what we want, the conditions.
Oh, you're going to read it?
Yeah, I thought we would.
Oh, okay, yes, I did.
Janet's doing it.
I can.
Yeah, there's a piece, please, we just don't.
Erin, oh, sorry.
It's very short, the second, hold on. I'll screen share that for you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
The natural. But I don't have.
No, 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 I just wanted to point out to you that it's not incomplete. We're getting there.
I can.
Do you want to even add, I can, the wording?
I can add it in here.
For the condition. Attorney Shansky, if you want to add any language. Homeowners perspective.
I don't know if I can read that, Erin.
Okay, I'll try.
Madam Chair, so the two emendations that I would recommend would be the applicant or its successor. So it captures whatever does happen down the line, and provide reporting to the zoning enforcement officer in accordance with the plan, rather than annual.
Does the plan call for, I know some inspections are quarterly, but at least I don't want to get into having, well.
You're the one that has to enforce it.
More than once a year. Well, I get, that's.
According to the plan.
That's fine, we could do it that way, we'll get.
The successor thing, successor name.
I hope the plan will reference, can we?
According to the plan on that? If that makes sense. Put report comma, according to the plan, comma, too.
Well, I don't think the plan.
Erin, just to help out.
And I beg your pardon, I think since the program is called the Stormwater Maintenance Program, that plan ought to be programmed. And you may as well make it a capital P.
That's why I don't screen share.
Is it left pocket? Sorry.
It's just a fine.
Please feel free to chime in.
Well, yeah, I mean, the goal is to implement the plan and provide regular reporting to the zoning enforcement officer.
Just to make sure there is some enforcement.
So my question is, this is almost for you, is there were 46 homes. Who is giving you the report?
So that will depend on who is the governing entity of either common area, which would be an HOA, or if it is a rental situation, it's going to be the property owner, who is responsible.
Do you have a name?
That's the subject of this.
And that will be captured in the documents should it become an HOA.
Okay.
Everyone happy with that? All right, ready? Ready?
Fire away.
Ee motion, Janet.
Oh, thank you. Okay, the following resolution is offered, the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approves application number 22-55, 155 New Road, MAP 60 lots 9, 10, and 11. Zone PDD, owner 155 New Road Madison LLC, applicant Hammond Asset Commons LLC. Site plan application to construct 46 residential units and accessory common building and associated site improvements under Section 32 and Development District. As shown on a set of plans, Hammond Asset Place Residential Development, 155 New Road, Madison, Connecticut. Regulatory submission November 1, 2023, revised January 2, 2024. Prepared for Hammond Asset Commons LLC by SLR. 18 sheets and architectural plans, New Road units, New Road, Madison, Connecticut, by Craig A. Leiberite Architect, dated March 29, 2022, revised to October 20, 2022, with the following conditions. One, the zoning officer be notified at least 48 hours prior to commencement of any regulated activity. Two, that all erosion and segmentation controls be installed prior to any site disturbance be maintained for the duration of construction activities, and until the site is sufficiently stabilized to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Three, the applicant shall utilize DEEP's guidance document, best management practices for temporary construction and reconstruction operations in aquifer protection areas for the duration of construction activities. Four, the applicant shall file necessary lot line revisions on the Madison land records prior to submission of application for preliminary certificate of zoning compliance. Five, the applicant shall file the approved affordability plan on the Madison land records prior to submission of application or preliminary certification of zoning compliance. The plan shall clearly identify the administrator of the affordable units. Six, the stormwater system shall be inspected by the design engineer during construction to verify consistency with the approved plans. Seven, an as-built survey of all improvements, including stormwater system components, shall be submitted to the zoning enforcement officer with written verification from a licensed engineer that the stormwater system was constructed in accordance with the approved design plans. This submittal shall be completed prior to the issuance of a final certificate of zoning compliance. Eight, given the location of this development within the aquifer recharge area of the Connecticut Water Company's Reddick Well Field, the applicant shall provide a plan utilizing best management practices for the removal of ice within the development. This plan shall demonstrate how the applicant will minimize the use of chemical deicing agents. Nine, the applicant or its successor shall implement the stormwater maintenance program as proposed by the design engineer and provide a report according to the program to the zoning enforcement officer. The Commission acknowledges that the applicant has provided an ineptual plan to help mitigate safety and operational issues at the intersection of Route 450 and New Road, Duck Hole Road. The applicant has further agreed to pursue discussions with the town and Connecticut DOT regarding these proposed improvements. In the event that changes to be approved plans are required as a result of other agency permitting to support the proposed activity, the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission reserves the right to review said changes and may require modification of this approval. This approval is made based upon the finding that the proposed use is consistent with the approved master plan for the plan development district for the subject property. The Commission approved said master plan with the understanding that the applicant successfully demonstrated that the proposal is consistent with Section 32.2.1 of the zoning regulations, as the location, uses, and layout of the proposed PDD are in accordance with the intent of and the goals and objectives contained in the Plan of Conservation and Development. The PDD is in harmony with the surrounding neighborhoods and land uses, and its proximity to major roads, including I-95, will help provide convenient access to the site while minimizing impacts to local residential streets. The effective date of this approval is January 18, 2024.
Thank you, Janet.
Have a second.
Erin, you have a minor issue.
What's the issue?
It should be a report or recording.
Did I say a report?
You did, you said it.
You want a report? Here you go.
Bingo, done.
All right, then, could I have a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
Putting John Morgan opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Good night.
Okay, so also pending, we have 23-61, 9 Governor's Way, MAP 35 Lot 2, which we need to table to our January 18 meeting. Could I have a motion table? Janet? What I found first? You go to the session, all in favor? Okay, so discuss that at our next meeting. So flipping back up to the Plan of Conservation and Development. Rachel, are you with us still?
Yes.
And thank you for waiting, we appreciate that. And we have a hard copy with all of the track changes being nearly impossible to read. Just wanted to let you know, Rachel, we have hard copies of that. I don't know how you want to go ahead and go through what we've been working on.
Yeah, I can briefly kind of go over the changes that were made since last time you guys looked at the document. Honestly, like, most of it should look the same. The only difference is that the policies and actions have been, instead of being split between the built and natural environment, they're now in their own section. That kind of like speaks to the overlap between built and natural environment. So I can share my screen and kind of show you.
You could show us Section 5, I think that was the.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
Can you all see that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have a little brief kind of introduction to what is happening here. We go over these three goals. Briefly outline, sorry?
Can you zoom in, Rachel?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better or more? I'll go until we're off-screen here.
That's good.
Okay, so briefly outlining these seven policies. And then get into each policy, and then its corresponding actions.
Rachel, those policies, so the three goals are the same from our last discussion in the power. discussion in the PowerPoint presentation, the policies as well, but there was rewording. I think Rachel, you and John worked on, I recall that, I think policy one was the most wordsmithing.
Yeah.
They're generally the same.
Yeah, very, very little about the actual substance of the policy has been changed. It's really just the wording, making it flow a little bit smooth, more smoothly. So that should all look pretty familiar. And yeah, so each policy has its corresponding actions. And that's really, that's about it, like it's, yeah, it's pretty much should all be what you've seen before, just reorganized.
So as we've consolidated these action items, we've placed them in what seemed to be the most appropriate home under the policy column. And so we were hoping today to be able to go through these actions and see are they, what, do they make sense? Are they redundant? Should we consolidate some? Should we eliminate? Didn't we forget anything? You know, things of that nature. And then based on your comments this evening, then we can send those to a lot of the stakeholders who came and gave us these suggestions for action items to see if this, you know, because these action items are, someone will need to implement these and get this done. So then we come back and ask, is this reasonable? You're likely going to be the responsible party for, for achieving this action item. And then we can get some additional feedback that way. Make sense?
So yeah, and I just want to add that I, oh yeah, I made a pass at the policies and actions to consolidate, well, I didn't change anything, I just rearranged a little bit. One thing I did is I took away the numbers because I didn't want to, I didn't think we should imply that there's a priority here.
In order.
So I just listed a policy without a number and then I took away the A through J or whatever and, and regrouped them a little bit. So I thought there were some sort of overarching actions that had subactions that, that made it, I think, a little more concise in a way, even though I didn't really change too much. I, I moved a couple of things, so I think maybe that's what you see in the green here. I'm looking at though a version, I haven't exactly accepted all changes, I just don't show all the track changes. So I can move it much more clearly.
And Rachel, I sent you a copy of that as well. What would you prefer to have as the document to edit while we're working? Would you prefer to have it broken out?
Yeah, how does everyone feel? Or do you want even a cleaner copy, which I could even just email it to you right now? Or no, you have it, or just show it without all the track changes maybe?
Yeah, you can, you can hide the track, the changes, right Rachel?
Um, yes, do you see my screen right now?
We still see the old screen of the recommendations.
All right, let me try to reshare so we're looking at the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm all right if we want to start with this document since it is essentially, you know, all the policies and actions if we want to do it that way.
Show without, show without change.
Can you, yeah, change your view?
Show without changes in line.
Yeah.
Just accept.
Well, yeah, you could hide markup.
You can hide them too.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
There we go.
Please. Now zoom in.
Oh yeah, sorry guys, all right. Cool, we're here.
This is really pedantic, but the word various is just a throwaway, so I would get rid of it on the policy. So it reads through spaces naturally built, providing menus for.
I like it.
So under the policy, so how, now that I'm not seeing the track.
We have, we have a question. What constitutes a venue for celebrations?
Yeah, and we, so that was Adam, I didn't understand that.
Where is it?
It's right on the top.
The first one, it says venues for celebrations, shopping, recreation, dining, and relaxation.
If you get the rest.
Bars?
Celebrations, I mean, like birthday parties and what, I mean.
Well, the language that, that.
I just don't know where that.
Do you have that language in front of you of what you had in the, I can find it in the.
Yeah, I need to put a question. So, so it's a downtown district?
I know, I.
That, that's a venue.
I think I have it up as well.
For the July parade there.
The town green?
The town green, I mean, I can, that's what I'm, I'm assuming that's what it's.
Yeah, I think this was coming from like a, a public space standpoint, like spaces for events and things of that nature.
And accessibility, this is our accessibility component, connections between events, celebrations.
Interesting language, yeah.
Yeah. She sounds very personal on it.
Yeah, I think maybe public celebrations.
Public, or public events.
Or events, yeah, something like that.
Or, or, oh yeah.
The word is important because people are going to start building things to make this required. So celebrations, parties, public events are different.
Yeah.
And probably either way, but one thing I took away from this is it's going to drive the thought process of others.
Right.
I don't think public events are something.
I think that might do better.
Because we could have a whole, for something, for me, it's not a, it's not a good event.
Well, because it's, they're not personal. As opposed to.
See, if you look at what's going to be done with Academy, those, that is going to have spaces for private events and celebrations.
Well, when you look at your actions under here too, that might help.
Yeah.
Your wording of the policy of where.
Yeah, where that fits in.
Going in here, it, it's about.
You're very that way then, yeah, take, take. I think public events is fine.
It could be community events too, but I think public events.
Events is more specific.
That's fine.
And for me, that's the idea, that's what Madison will become, right? The place you go to and you do those things. That's. Or we, they have.
Do you, do you want to read through them? One by, I mean, we kind of did that before, we, the action items one by one to see if you are in agreement.
Sorry, you took, you took out the one, two, three, and ABCs.
I took out the numbers, yeah, I took out the outline form just to make it also, well, first of all, so it's not implying that we prioritize these. And then second, I mean, the formatting, we can, we can play with however we all want to, but I just, I just found the A through J to H or something with five person.
What we're calling implementation strategies now, funding policies. Wrong effect purposes, purposes, not doable. You can't chase ten, seven, seventy, and relax, you have five. Right, you just, you're not going to achieve anything. So I like this because now it whittles it down to, are they just three or there's another?
It's like four in each, each policy.
It's like four, right, so to achieve this policy, do these, implement these four strategies, then the actions are needed.
Makes it more doable.
Yeah, absolutely. You can assign someone that updated town development plan at your job.
Think if you put bullets, it'd make it a little easier to read.
Yeah.
Without implying.
And what shape should be?
Well.
Bullet, I think is.
More options.
I like diamonds.
I only have one concern.
Yeah, I'm not.
More than willing to be overridden.
Yeah, the interior are ready to sell forty-five.
So my only concern is how and where do we know that we meet any state local, whatever mandates? How do we know?
That's actually a good question for Rachel, but we talk about it.
Yeah, the whole front section of the.
Well, if there's a matrix, how do you point out where it is if you don't have any enumeration whatsoever in the document anyway?
So a couple of things, one is there's going to be in the appendices, there's going to be all the references that we need, but are you saying that you want to?
Even though it's policy one, you just have a policy.
Need a footnote in the document?
I don't know if we need to or if we can really, but.
No, you have to think about that too.
I guess it's, well, that's what I was.
How do you identify the policies?
Yeah, how do you identify and, and know?
When you have an index, you know, or, or you need to refer to something and the public just wants to.
Or you label them.
You don't necessarily need numbers. You need a way of representing.
Right.
And there is a way to do that.
Sure.
I'm, I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
There's a way of doing a matrix that has three different things and in a box that shows the tick box, so level it off. It's actually, tends to be more informative if you can see policy created excessively, you know, translated policy one is right. It's going to be. Right, I can work, so just write down, don't laugh, write down house of quality as a template.
Oh yeah.
House of quality.
Yeah.
We should, we should have a Q and A versus.
I know, I know. The engineers.
It works.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
List the whole title, right?
Sure.
Okay. Can we ask a question about your, your action item, Carol, just to kind of understand? I know there's little bullets in front of these three subsections, but so up, so an action item is updated downtown development plan building upon the two thousand and five Bradley Road Vision Study to include the entire downtown village district. And I'm assuming these can be, these are subactions or how?
They were just listed as separate actions and I just thought it, I thought they, they actually were covered by updated downtown development plan.
Well, I think, I think a point you should probably identify it as actions if that's what they are. You see.
But Erin, I think some of that actually would get worked out too when we start to think about who's the implementation and who's responsible. If, you know, if they're completely separate, maybe they don't fit under that category.
Right, or there's various studies that.
Or subgroups and such.
Create this plan.
Yeah.
That's the.
You'd have a bigger team for the main action item and then you'd have smaller sort of breakout groups or one person for the subcategories. I'm hoping it works.
Yeah, so if you just process breakdown, you basically have a higher level goal.
Yeah.
With all the parts that have to be implemented, complex, they call.
Yeah.
So that listing is really those pieces.
And rather than have them all sort of equally balanced action items, I thought these were underneath.
So they're probably broader, not specific.
Yeah, they're, they're part of the bigger action item.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have to figure out how to.
But I wonder if, I wonder if we should let everybody get a chance to think about this.
Well, so why don't we read through them, or at least kind of, I don't understand.
It's good, I mean. I mean, I'm happy to go through them all, but I also, like, it took me a while to sit and look at them and think about it. And we can still do that, we can do both, we can go over it tonight and then have people continue to think about it and edit.
Carol, I, I would suggest we go off our own and read this first. I mean, we're going to, we're going to wordsmith this thing to death.
Yeah, that's the trouble, I mean, we could, yeah, we could do this for another year. I agree. Right, everybody's got a different word and idea, you know, so.
So we should go ahead and go through it, John, I'm sorry.
No, 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 we should, we should.
You can have a think about it.
We should take this, yeah, we should take, to read this. And really with a, with an idea that looking at a general, generally not, not if there's, it needs to be a comma or a, or a word change, I mean, there's going to be continual word changes on this thing.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, how, how do we get the version to add that's, where is the most recent version?
Erin, did you?
I emailed you.
I think it was a four o'clock email.
Okay, it's a Word document where you.
Right, so it is a Word document, right, so Carol basically cut out the policies and action items and put them in a new Word doc.
We try using some kind of shared sites so we can all edit the same document at once. Is that going to be, I think that's what it was.
No, I just sent it, it's a Word document, Erin, Erin just sent it as a Word document.
Yeah, Erin gets five different viewers. Yes. Well, we tried before with the PowerPoint.
Like just a Google doc that people can comment on?
I use Microsoft One Drive. But that allow us to edit at the same time. Yeah, it's each other's advantage real time.
Do you want to do your house of quality? First, version first?
No.
Okay.
I think that's going to be, because I had the same question. There's, when we're going through it there, the state requires you to consider these things. And then it says you should also, but you don't have to, consider the regional ones. So we need to have the regional and state hours for all together.
Correct.
And. The house of quality may not be the right way to do it, it's the first thing I thought of.
Yeah.
But if we have those, then we can just do it like we did before. With the, make sure we got all.
So you're concerned just to have checks and balances that everything that you're addressing here? I, I think that's something Rachel that we can probably help with, right?
Yeah, they can do it, that'd be great.
Yeah, between me and John, we can figure that out.
My point, my point Erin is you want to make it audible.
Yes.
That's, that's what you want, so that it can be audited by anybody at any time. Now, Carol, I'm going to, I'm going to plead with you to put some kind of policy enumeration. We can even use a random exodus number if you would prefer, so that there's no prioritization implied.
Just put a disclaimer at the top, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to mention.
I did make a priority, for the pri, priorities, it's important for, to be able to talk about it.
Okay.
It'd be easier. I don't know, but some things I would use bullets, not.
That's fine.
Great, right?
Yeah, the ABC.
Policy A. That's less.
And also feel free to read and figure and juggle and, you know, move things around.
You know what, I got to tell you, I can't, if I get this at four twenty-five in the afternoon before a meeting, I, I have no way I can sit down and look at it and come here and, it's, it's impossible because of my job.
Absolutely.
I, I'm, that's not realistic.
Well, that, that wasn't the, the intent of setting that to have people read that beforehand.
No, but I'm just saying, next time around, if we're going to do this and wordsmith, I would like to be able to get it pretty quickly.
Well, that, that was the working draft that I sent out. So that was what we were planning to discuss this evening when I sent the agendas out or the action items under the policies.
Right, I'm just asking that if we could get the working document sooner than the same day as.
I, I did.
You got it.
I got it today at four.
No, 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 you got Carol's suggestions from her reviewing the working draft today. Everybody had the same policies ahead of time.
Okay.
That, that was, I just, that's the only thing I wanted to.
That's all I'm reading, I just.
She's not the first. So, okay, so my understanding is we're not going to go over any actions today? And we're going to table this to the February meeting?
Please.
Okay, okay.
We're going to cogitate.
The, the United is totally.
Can we agree to something?
I think, you know, I'm so, so much work and.
Can we agree to get something done between now and February, so we have a definitive thing to review in February?
Ahead of time, yeah, like a week or two ahead of time.
So I, I see, I think this is a good working document for the policies and the actions, implementation strategy, right?
Well, well, that's the, we don't know that because not everybody had a chance to read it, so.
But if we could work on it in the next couple of weeks and have something then to.
I just, I just want to leave the meeting with an action for everyone to say, do this before the next meeting. And then the next meeting, we will review the results of whatever this is.
Yes, so that would be the working draft that John and Rachel sent out.
Right.
And Carol has shared her suggestions for edits of that, which you haven't. And Carol has shared her suggestions for edits of that, which you haven't had an opportunity to review.
Correct.
So you should review the action items that are in the working draft. That was our goal for this evening, to to go through that. And make your suggestions. If you agree with Carol and wanted to use that. You're welcome to, or I can just put the working draft in a shared document and you can make comments on the workings as side comments. You can mark up your own comments and send to me and and I will send them to John and Rachel and they can keep track of everyone's comments. So that before our next meeting, you'll have everybody's information. That, to me, would be the easiest thing.
I think that's.
To be able to usher your, you know, so.
This is not helpful.
With everybody, you know, to read and say, well, Carol did this and Bob did, you know, and to.
So then take your Word document, make your changes and send them to me.
Okay.
And then we'll get that information to John and Rachel and send that back to you so that you can consider it. And then you have to discuss them here to see what you're in agreement of.
John Morgan, does that sound good?
Um, I, didn't we ever talk about a smaller work, a subgroup to try to pull something together, maybe with Rachel and John?
Did.
Yeah.
That's what we did with the reduced policies.
The next step was to do that for the actions. My my concern is we're not going to get anywhere. We're going to have another document that's almost edited, that's going to be wordsmithed in February and we're going to be stuck. I'd much rather just say, do this specific thing, so. The actions have been, there are too many. They have skinny down. Carol took a run at it. I had a different perspective, but kind of the same thing, which is pick the three or four most important ones that are in the policy. Those are the implementation strategies. Everything else is called commentary, which is valuable and we don't want to forget. But they don't rise to the level of implementation strategy. Agreed. We need to get to that level.
I like what you're saying.
In February, we'll never get this done.
That's right. Remember, we're trying to wrap this up by April. I would never do it.
So I'm trying to figure out some way of.
Well, I appreciate that. Yes, but I I, and perhaps you're comfortable, I don't want to not give you the opportunity to review all of the actions that we had gathered from your feedback and had the opportunity to say, you think something should be in here, rather than just. I I'm not saying Carol's wrong, but just accepting a a a different version where you may not have seen that list. You you may get to the same conclusion, but I want you to at least have all of the information to make your own decisions as well.
Well, I'd be happy to have Bob take a run at it.
Yeah, I'll I'll look what you have. Can we have a ten minutes at the next meeting? Just a touch base?
I agree with that.
See where we're at.
We can put it on for the next meeting, sure.
Fifteen minutes after very beginning, just to say, okay. Actions, any big problems with the current actions.
I mean, clear marching boys.
Yeah, I I like.
To do what I need to do by February.
If y'all have input, give it to Erin before. Before the next meeting so she can collate it, all right? And then we'll look at that and say we have general agreement.
So that's January eighteenth.
Right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, so Erin, what you sent out, on what day?
With your agenda.
Okay.
I'll look. It's what's, it's the document that's posted on the agenda?
Oh, okay.
The working draft?
Okay. And that has all the latest changes that we've all included, Carol's.
No, it doesn't have mine.
No, because Carol took that and prepared comments for this evening.
Oh, okay.
And that I I sent that to you today.
Yeah.
And printed a copy in anticipation of the conversation.
Twelve twenty-eight was the before.
Okay, one.
Correct, right? Right, that's the date of first when this was.
Any thoughts from our attorneys?
I can just send them one email if that's helpful.
Yeah, you guys.
I I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the policies. I was here when you guys separated them into the policies, which, you know, taken alone. And I and I said this at the the public session before the select, the board of of selectmen. Nobody can really disagree with the policies. I think that's the point of them, right?
Correct.
You just don't disagree. Everybody would want this in a utopian environment, I guess. But and and just looking through the actions, which I think is where the where the rubber hits the road for 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 my practice, Marjorie's practices, you know, what types of developments are going to be received favorably? At least to have some predictability about what we want. And I I am looking at these and and I I too would like to look at them. And if I have thoughts, I'm happy to share them as a member of the public with Erin. But I'm looking at the policy relating to climate change, which was the policy formerly known as Policy Five, I guess. And that that talks about.
M K A.
Talks about actions regarding climate change and future social, economic and environmental challenges. But I've gone through it a couple of times now. I don't see any actions there that relate to any social.
Social, economic.
Economic factors. And if that's the case, I think we might want to just say it's climate change and environmental challenges, because that appears to me to be what you're encouraging action towards. And I don't know that we ought to just throw aside future or current social and economic factors and whether there would be actions under a separate policy related to that. But those are, those are my, I mean, we could wordsmith, we can talk about what different words mean to different people, but I'm I'm not here to do that tonight. I recognize the challenge that you have had before you. It's not easy to gather all these thoughts. I did read the policies from when they were separated. I, again, I don't, I really don't see how anyone could really object to the policies. Again, I think the actions are what are important. And I agree with the fact that actions in particular, I don't necessarily know that the policies don't need to be numbered or not numbered. But the actions, I think, ought to all have sort of equal weight, because they, depending on a project or particular circumstances, it may be something you want to prioritize, or it might not be something you want to prioritize, yeah. So I I agree that the actual action should be taken on a case by case basis. And your commission would evaluate whether they're consistent with the policies and so.
And priorities are also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I did add, I did add case by case, I think, Erin, to some of our proposals for zoning changes. So check, read, read my language there carefully. Because I think it is important to have it case by case. Marjorie? Attorney Shansky?
Marjorie, okay.
Um, but that's a good point about the sustainability where we're kind of broadening the definition, then we kind of go back to just focusing on natural environment, you know, things.
It would be presumptuous of me to comment, having just sort of reintroduced myself to the work that you're doing. But I do want to say, because I teach land use planning at Quinopea Law School and at the Yale School of the Environment, and that we started, we worked last semester following your hearings on this topic by playing them in class. I intend to resume that when school starts.
We were the case study.
When school starts. But and to that end, especially talking about climate resiliency, some of my students, one of my students at Quinopea Act did a report for the Climate Resiliency Committee. Somebody else did something for wetlands and.
I remember.
And the natural resources inventory and somebody else did a third thing that I'm now forgetting, what?
Marijuana.
Marijuana.
That was a hot topic.
I offer you, I offer you my students at Yale and at Quinopea Act, should there be interests, topics of interest that they could enhance your appreciation of by devoting their semester to researching and reporting to you, so.
How about social and economic sustainability?
If I had a pencil, I would write that down, maybe crystal on the case.
Tell I used to teach.
Yeah.
That's such a great resource, Marjorie.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I I offer it with an open heart because it it works both ways. It's mutually advantageous for them to have real.
Real world.
Real world experience, so so thank you for an opportunity to butt in with that.
And we welcome them to join us in any way also.
You'll see us from time to time.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Oh, I do want to say one other thing. Num- uh, count me among the numbers brigade, because when I'm writing a note to you that says this is consistent with the plan of conservation and development as section one point two.
Okay, okay.
It just makes the utility of it and the user friendliness of it.
You're absolutely right.
palpable.
Return of the enumeration.
Go ahead and everybody. Appreciate this.
Hey, I'm all for the unanimous exodus number. I think that would.
Yeah, that makes for me too. All right, Rachel, are you taking all this into?
So it's section one.
Yeah, I have a lot of notes here.
Great. Any other thoughts, comments?
So it's section one, policy X Y Z, not policy one, X Y Z.
Something like that, yeah.
That's the only change, right? To have a reference point.
Whatever works.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rachel. And we'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some comments so that we can compile them.
Sounds good. I have some stuff for me and John to talk about and work on too, so we'll be in touch.
Great, thanks, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You too.
Okay, I think we can move on to our approval of minutes.
Minutes, December twenty-first meeting. Members present, the so, do so, Ruben Reinhardt, I can follow that down, some wording. Motion for approval. Second, Erin, any comments or edits? Yes.
The date is wrong for calling the meeting of December seventh. It was the December twenty-first. In my calling the meeting order.
Oh. Okay.
And then also, actually, it was in Attorney Shansky. She was referred to as Attorney Marjorie. I thought we should try to say Attorney Shansky. It's down under twenty-three dash fifty-five, under the pending applications.
Okay. Anything else? Great. Vote to approve.
I will abstain since I was there.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, what is that funny?
Yes. Any further remarks, Erin? My question is if you would like to add the legislative. To the January eighteenth meeting.
I don't know, there's a lot to deal.
It's two weeks, three weeks.
I think it shouldn't, because there's some more weeks to review and.
Yeah.
All we have is what's already in front of us.
I think we're pretty, some of us are, you know.
Is it a big?
We're ready.
What's the agenda look like at this?
There are no public hearings. These are your only pending applications, nine governors' way.
Oh, great, yeah.
What?
So we can slip in a little bit about the P O C D?
Yeah, yeah.
So we make sure we're making progress and then if we want to add that as, yeah, I think that works.
Maybe add more time about the P O C D.
There's a possibility as well that nine governors will be tabled. This is a stock application that also requires a C O P from the state. Typically, we hold off on coastal applications until the state takes action, just to make sure they're not changing anything. And that application has been submitted, so we were just going to coordinate with Bob Russo, who who is the applicant's representative from C L A Engineering, just to see where that stands.
Okay.
If that, if they're not ready for January, then that can get pushed to February.
Indefinitely, I think we should as well. So how should we, how do you want us to behave, Erin? Like, do you want us to each come with a report, a summary of our, you know?
I I think that's up to you, how. That's.
If you're ready to have a discussion, bring your information.
Yeah, bring, you know, sort of bring your notes, bring your points that we can discuss.
I thought that, because that's what I thought we're going to do tonight, the executive session, but we didn't really get there, so.
You don't have to have on for take action on anything at the next meeting. You can.
Just share.
Yeah, maybe that's better.
But don't, you just have deliberation. Don't we have to be in public? Didn't you say before?
It's not a public hearing, but it's a public.
No, no, right, exactly. But don't we have to call?
Is there any timing associated with that?
All of your meetings are a public meeting, meaning that's not an executive session.
Doesn't have to be special on.
Yes, that's all.
Doesn't matter, no, doesn't matter, it shows up.
And we'll need, we'll need to make the point that it's not a discussion of public.
Right. All right.
Yeah. And see how it goes. After, Bob, you missed a good meeting. The twenty-first.
That was very vocal.
You might want to watch the YouTube.
It's all over.
Yeah.
By the way, is where where, can we ask where that stands or where what?
Where what?
Was that re, they rescinded?
The public.
Well, they've been true.
I know, but did they?
No, there's not a rescinding.
They took this. I was that guy.
They have to, they have to get their hands.
That's what I'm saying.
I was here.
I can vote in favor.
I did, I thought they were going to rescind everything at your suggestion right away.
I was here.
Not yet. They're they're getting all their ducks in a row.
Oh, okay, that's all, I guess that's what.
Yeah, I was here, I remember.
So for the twenty-first, we confused the bobs.
Yeah, you can bob. No, I was here. I was in November twenty-seven, that I missed, you know.
Okay, I had no other comments. No other comments for me.
Well, so Erin, for the meeting minutes, then Bob Reinhardt was absent.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-fourth.
Bob wasn't, that Bob wasn't.
Yeah, I was there.
We're often confused.
Right.
Tell when you have the same thing, right?
Right. So we get, we get the two bobs confused.
Oh, right.
Okay, Raquel, did you get that? That's.
It's a wash.
It's Bob O'Connor who was there, not Bob Reinhardt on the twenty-first.
Conservation of bobs.
As long as there's a Bob, it's okay.
As long as we have a Bob or a.
Right. Any other comments or anything, any topics?
Oh, I have a topic. Since we are relatively full now, I think we're only missing alternates.
Right, that's correct.
And this is the first time since I've been on the floor last year that that's happened. I was wondering if we could have an executive session with members and you, Carol? Just to kind of go kind of a, get to know each other, but also go over everything together.
We've talked about training sessions.
So there are legal parameters in which you can go into executive session. You can have training sessions with our attorneys or you are required to have continuing education, so I I guess we're happy to set something up for you if you need.
I would, no, but Bob?
No, I think we've been talking about, can we come up with some system where we're not going as late? And we're not having people with hours. And we tend to give short shift to the ones that come in at ten thirty or eleven. It seems to me that we we should be able to figure out a way of working with the staff more effectively, so that doesn't happen.
Well, one thing I.
Or it happens less.
One thing I thought, and I did watch the YouTube video from the twenty-first, which I told myself I was not going to do, but I couldn't, I couldn't not do it. And I can see that, like, at that, using that as a case study, we were just going around in circles for so long. And, you know, at some point, Erin, I think I should have just said, or you even said, it's not a conversation, you know, it's a public hearing as you present, an applicant presents the application and then we respond to it. There's some back and forth.
So maybe to go through the process.
Yeah, so some of that process where.
No, mine was completely different. I agree with Bob on that. No, I was just asking. I feel like that we've all just kind of come in and, okay, three of us came in at once and we, you know. And we're all flying blind in a respect, so I guess you would, you could call it a training session.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But it would be just among ourselves. That's why I said executive session.
I don't believe that can, it doesn't occur in an executive session. You can have training sessions, but when you meet, it's in a public meeting.
Could we call it as a special meeting though, so it's not one of our regularly?
With other.
Is there any way you could call it? I mean, I just, I think it's special.
You can have special meetings, they're open to the public. Which is fine, and your meeting can be dedicated to training. Erin, do you want to explain why we can't just get together and talk?
If nine of us happen to meet up at Starbucks one day and have a conversation. That's a, that's, that's.
You have to talk about specific cases. That's not the point. It's to talk about our internal organization.
It constitutes. It constitutes a meeting under the Planning, Isom Commission. You are not.
And we have a carom, so.
Able to do that. You have to do that here, you know, that, that is, this is the formal for that.
It doesn't mean anybody else.
We talked about how the meetings is as long as to be.
And we can go through that in.
Maybe we should do it.
I, I think that's also the Commissioner one oh one. And that UConn has a great.
UConn clear.
Yeah, a, a great.
Yeah.
Segment online to unders, that I think would be helpful as well. We could go over that in person, the, the basics of that. The format of a meeting you're referring to. Robert.
Yeah, how is it going to be? I mean, right now, we're not really using Robert's rules. I mean, the, if we were you, I mean, and I'm only saying this as a former chair of a commission for nine years. You know, we did everything by the book and everything was Robert's rules. You addressed the chairperson a certain way, you addressed other people's or, you know, everything was done formally. I'm not saying I liked it at all, in fact, I didn't. I was uncomfortable with it because I'm a very more casual person. But I think we have to decide how things are going to be done. And thus, we're not going to have a meeting like we did last time. When Carol has to, you know, call people down, you know, and, and say, hey.
Enough.
Enough. You know, that, that's a shame that you had to do it. But I think if. So maybe it is a training, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I could just say, and it makes sense because we're all new. It could be just a special meeting to determine how.
How we're going to run the meetings.
Yeah, meeting flow.
Just about meeting.
Why do we have to structure our meetings the way we do? Why we can't communicate among ourselves?
Or you as chair, how, how are you, how are you going to, you know, do our, how, you know, how do you want us? No, but you're chair, so how do you want us to present and, you know, be commission members? That's, that's what.
Yeah, I'm with you there. So it's kind of expected norms and behaviors. So this is a new commission.
Of our commission, of our new commission.
So it'll still be a meeting open and open with that.
They all are.
So it's not, that's not a problem.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think of us as a team. And I don't need to be called Madam Chair.
No, but that's what I think we should go over. Because, so that we, I, I, at least I feel like I would like to be clear on things like that.
No, it makes sense because there's no one to look to to say, you five have been doing this for two years. Just do what they do. Because we're all coming out.
Which is sort of how we all learn, that's how I learned, was just by sitting in this thing.
So it's like.
I mean, that's how I learned to do archeology too.
And I could go along to the lines of bylaws as well.
The town bylaws.
No, for the commission, for the commission.
Commission bylaws?
Yeah. Well, didn't, just, again, just not to be a jerk about it, but I understand there's rules and stuff. But if we, if I recall, maybe I'm conflating things, but, and again, just point of process. You, I had to raise my hand and swear that I would uphold a bunch of stuff that I had never read and never heard about and didn't know anything about. Uh, the state of Connecticut stuff, United States, town of Madison. So isn't what we're talking about here, maybe some of those rules, some of those policies, some of those regulations, we should share and go through that? So, you know, because right now, I'm probably a violation of my oath. Because I, you know, I may have spoke out of turn or something because I didn't know any of the states.
I don't think it's, speaking of turn.
But you, you know, I'm hyperbole, but you, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you can go, you can go online and read all that stuff.
Well, no, and, and I, and I, it's not the re, I just think, since we're all new and we don't really know.
And now we have a full commission.
Now we have a full commission. That's the reason I brought it up.
It's been a party.
That we seem to be for the first time.
Well, I wonder if we could just tack it on to the end of the meeting.
Special meeting, yeah, or a special, just a.
Have a special meeting and just, and just.
Or go through. That'd be fun. And oftentimes, okay. I like, and oftentimes, especially as there, it may not, you know, I don't know that necessarily, I mean, there are requirements for ongoing training for commissioners. But it is quite common where even, you know, council or some, who can answer all, you know, and staff can do general, you, you can have specialized trainings, but you can just have general. And, and oftentimes, that does happen. I'm doing that with our inland wetlands agency next month as it's, you know, and, and Pete and I had said that, well, we're really busy in January because we have a lot of new first selectmen or a lot of new board members and they want to schedule some initial meeting. So that's fine. And maybe that's something that we build in anyway.
Yeah.
And, you know, that you plan in the beginning of the year. And you don't necessarily have to go in depth over all of your process. But, yeah, and then also building on that, we can create, and, and Carol and I have talked about this, welcome packets for, and we try for onboarding. We do try, we have meetings with new commission members to go through all of the hats that you wear and, and reference. I do have requested money and, and kind of reallocated budget money for these legally required books for you as reference to be able to provide to the commission. So, right.
No, no, I.
Right, but in, in anticipating, you know, we, I, I did kind of readjust our budget moving forward for ongoing training out, you know, anticipating that we're going to have people come in and they may not all be free.
But I think that's. One thing that really brought this up to me was last week when, um, last meeting, I'm sorry, last meeting, when the person in the back row, we all heard, because it wasn't here, spoke out and accused Carol of not running the meetings and you running the meetings and you being the one who ran everything and we were your puppets, basically. So that's why I'm saying I'd let, I, I, I don't want that to happen again and in the, in our public hearings, in our public setting. So I think that's another reason that we should just flush out the structure.
I, I agree with you and that interruptions in a meeting shouldn't happen in general. It's, it's.
It's not.
Poor behavior.
Well, it's awesome.
But I, I don't, I, I don't necessarily, uh, you, you can't prevent someone from having an opinion and from making statements. So I, I think I'm all for.
Because of that statement that I said, I felt like now that there are nine of us, we need to, you know, figure out.
The dynamics.
Yeah, so that we're seen as a strong commission. Because I think we aren't. I think we're seen as, oh, that guy's new, she's new, she came in, you know. I mean, people who are consistently seeing us, like Marjorie, they're like, oh, there's another new face this week, you know. Now we have consistency.
I agree. And I, I don't think you should sell yourself short. I think you have two new members over the last couple of months. But I think this board has had significant growth since you have been appointed. Um, and I can see that just in your interactions. So I, I don't necessarily believe that. I think you've had a lot of applications before you and challenging things to, and coming in, understanding that you're in the process of a plan of conservation and development, the master plan for your community. You have, you have a very heavy workload right now. So, and, and you're making thoughtful decisions, you're asking questions. You need some education on things, but that is my job to provide you with those sections of the regulations that you need to, and some things take experience.
So, and how we're perceived, you know, I think we're going to be criticized in a manner.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think that's.
Well, I'm trying to say, there's something which is great about this group. I don't think, there's the Duzla faction, his followers, and then there's the engineers who stick together on every. And then there's, no, there's none of that. Oh, you know, it's the God. He never gets that. So this is, you know, I've been on some groups where, you know, people, there's certain subgroups and we don't, we don't do that. I hope we never do, so let's.
That's why they don't want your meeting separately, groups to form your puppets.
Sure, that's right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, Duzla probably does that.
I think that's been working okay though in the end.
It did, it did. No, I wasn't, that was a criticism. I was just saying, from the public and the here, you know, that's why that, we, we need to at least appear that we're, we're together behind Carol. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
I think you just sort of have to take a little bit of incoming attack, right? You know, predict it, and then you deal with professional language, we did.
I agree.
That's, that's happened.
I called the commenter, I mean, I was glad, so, no, but I was so glad you.
We survived. And, you know, it's funny, when, when I watched the YouTube of that, using, again, using that as a case study, it didn't feel as bad as it did here. And I just thought, what is going on with these guys?
It's probably been.
You'll be all right. Right, but he knows better than to.
You should have some public.
Yeah.
And you know what? It could be educational to the public as well, right?
Absolutely, it could be a, you know, almost like a public outreach. Because I think one of the big misunderstandings is what is the role of the town? And what are the commissioners and, you know, and who's the whole thing of who's in charge or who's working for whom, or however you want to put it. You know, and to me, it's a collaboration. We rely on, obviously, Erin. For, for so much, and I don't see that as a problem. You know, I, that's what you're there for. That's what, we're here as the laypeople from town. You know, we all have different views of what we want for Madison. And, and you've got to guide us with all that we need guidance on.
I agree, but Karen, that guy had an axe to grind.
Yeah, some issues there, so. Anything else you want to ask?
Well, I think, you know, structurally, Erin, you were providing advice to developers on how to apply. That's appropriate. You know, they're coming to the town and, and they need to know, no, you have to fill out Form sixteen G and you need to do this, you need to, but, and that's your job. But that can lead to people perceiving that somehow you're pro, pro developer. And, and that's structurally, you're stuck with that because that's your job, to explain, you know, how to present an application. It's not, it's not, it's not you're doing something wrong to exactly with you. That's your job.
A lot of that.